I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill, would you please in a purpose?
Come on, please, Father gets. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day you've given us. We pray that you watch over the activities this evening, that they may be pleasing to you. We just thank you for the opportunity to represent you, represent the fine citizens of this town. In name of prayer, amen.
Amen. Thank you. A reading and approval of minutes from July 4th, please.
Motion approved, is this going to be?
Motion by Hack. Second, second by Stern, discussion. All in favor of the approval of the minutes, say aye. Aye opposed, same time, thank you. That's true. Okay, approve of the agenda, any changes, additions, corrections to the agenda?
I did add eight C on there.
Eight C, okay, condemnation, delusion on three ten, okay?
Motion to approve the agenda with the noted addition.
Here. Motion by Pillar. Second, second by Hack, discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. All right, five A, engineers report. Jer, or not, I'll start the project.
So, construction update, we're still done at eight thirty meetings on Tuesday morning. You guys can join, no builder public meetings. But, construction's on schedule here, B and G Electric, they're waiting on the N tanks to finish up and then they'll be out here, so they've been coordinating and listening in on the meetings to know where's progress is at, so they can come up with the tanks right into them. BN Tanks, Thursday, Friday this week, they'll have a big crane up on site and they're gonna be placing those walls, so the tanks gonna start to come together. Their project manager said, if you guys have newspaper, anyone that wants to be out there to take pictures of that, or anyone that wants to see that, they'll coordinate that out on site to make sure everyone's in a safe spot, but they'll beat the tank going up, so it'll be pretty cool here. But their projects on schedule as well, they're scheduled to be complete this fall. They submitted their contractors' application for payment number three for $256,116.28, and we would recommend approval of BN Tanks' application for payment number three.
Can you do with that now, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pillar, second, second by Stern, discussion. Go call.
Pillar, aye, Stern, aye, Hack, aye, Weeder, aye, Omenour.
Aye, motion carried.
And then the third contractor, Tan, they completed that hydrant change order this week here, so they got that done on Main Street, and then they're done with that water main door as well. They will have a concrete contractor out here early next week, it sounds like. So Tan will do the prep for them and then they'll come on form that and hopefully get that forward next week and then they'll schedule with the paving contractor from there. So they'll try and work that in and get that paved.
Remind us what's being done, the total of the concrete, how much of the curb and gutter?
John marked it out, but it is most fit on that side. So he marked it out and looked at the pictures to see where there wasn't the backfill underneath. He marked it out there.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and they'll come back and pave that. They did complete that permanent access road up to the, where it goes to the towers, so the Deapolis Drive, one around the bend, that looks good there, they have the ditches cut, so that all looks good and that's done. They'll complete the rest once BN Tanks gets their crane up there and their big equipment up there, they don't want to install it before then. So, they have that done and then they'll be back later to do the connections, but they'll be out of town here the rest of the week, it sounds like, they'll come back and do the connections and the other miscellaneous work once they're done. So they have submitted an application for payment number six for $99,831.75. We recommend payment for that.
Okay. You can do with that now too as well?
Motion approved.
Motion by Hack. Second by Weeder, discussion. Casey, probably on the curb work? That was on that, I guess, water line, replacement.
Yeah, so they have to do that, some of that's gone to trash, so they'll do the curb before they pave.
One of the residents up there mentioned to me the other day, kinda had the corner hand, said, "We really wanna pave that street right away? Or do we wanna wait till next winter to see if it have any issues to..." Case, we gotta cut into it again and not have... You know, we could put our crushed material, asphalt material on there for the year, I don't know, just food or thought, I know you and I were talking about that too. I told her, I said, "I'm pretty sure we can get the fix right this time." But what if, you know, is it gonna save us a chunk of money if it doesn't work right? And we gotta get digging there again next, next year, I don't, I don't know, it's just a... You know, that's, that project has been such a mystery, that it almost, I don't...
If, sometimes we do do underground work in one year, we wait the year to let it settle, because that is an issue, you know, but it's sandy soil up there, so it probably won't settle, you know. It's not, that's not normal, but if you really want to, I don't have a problem with that. But I don't think it's necessary, but we just need to know in the next week or two, if we wanna do.
I don't know if I'd wanna do that, but it's just, it put a question of doubt in my head.
Only God, I could see with waiting, who's trying to get another contractor next year? He's already gonna be in the area.
So it's, quality asphalt, quality asphalt, yeah, and they were gonna piggyback this on the some working center. So we have to pay revolve fee for sure.
That's true.
That'd be the only bad thing I could see was waiting, because the cost is gonna be high. Yeah, we've seen everything else, they're not nothing price to...
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. You have the minutes.
It shouldn't be necessary. Come on, what folks want.
All right, all last, okay, thank you, yeah, Casey.
So then on the fire, I guess, fire hydrants, so that one then? That one that's at the end of the, end of the run, is that still in place, or is that then?
They removed two, they replaced one.
Okay, so they're checking that out.
And to shut off here, were we able to identify what that's at?
Nope.
I visited with my father-in-law and he said that there used to be one more house to the west.
I'm thinking it probably was a curb stop for that.
And I'm wondering if maybe when they demolished that house, they capped it, couldn't find the curb stuff, because you guys said it was below the surface.
Six inches from the hydrant, because it is in the open position, but maybe when they did the water main,
they shut off the main, and then capped it wherever.
But we left the curb stop there intact, left it in the opposition in case it is needed sometime.
Okay.
Okay, we have, we have a motion in seconds, so, any more discussion? Go call.
Hack, aye, Weeder, aye, Pillar, aye, Stern, aye, Omenour.
Aye, motion carried.
I just have a couple miscellaneous things here to touch on, the approvals really. We still do have some manhole rehab work that will be happening here, hopefully this month, that was scheduled to be done by July. Some internal rehab work, we don't be doing any digging or anything like that, just a trenchless replacement. Alley concrete paving, so West River, California is gonna be paving that, that area, their parking lot area, and we have a bid from concrete contractor P in that alley. You guys create an improvement district for that here from months, or maybe a month ago, and the next step, I think, was to contact those neighborhood landlords and see what their wishes were. And there's two ways to do that, we could, I think, send it out and tell them that we're going to do it and ask them to protest, or we could ask them to petition for it. Either way, there's ways to do that. Monty, I haven't been able to...
Was publishing a resolution of necessity and allowing them thirty days to protest.
Okay, so if that, that helps them, if they don't protest, then you guys can do the work and then assess them for it. Okay, when does that end to them?
We can't have a hearing on that till fifteen.
Oh, okay, so we'll be back a month from now, if it doesn't get protested out, I would assume we'll pave that out. Okay, well, good. And the, the last real thing I have then is, just kinda got an email from Buster today, well, transportation alternatives grant, we are doing one, you guys are doing one DOT job right now, that's the Indy Streets program project, that's the work, the pedestrian trail on the highway, the underpass, the lighting, so that's set in motion. This is another, it's a different program, this is the TAP, or sometimes it's referred to as the Safe Rails to School program, or it was formerly known as the Safe Rails to School program. Good uses for this would be some interconnecting work in town. I've been successful helping towns apply for these by painting the picture, or trying to connect the, the school to the swimming pool, or the, you know, downtown area to a playground, or filling in some missing pieces of pedestrian trails in some places, so. It's a competitive program, you have to put together an application with your project and apply, and then, you know, it'll happen, you know, three to five years later when the DOT gets around to it. This one's an eighty percent grant, applications are due in a month. Just bringing it up, I know there's a, there's an idea of interconnecting or, or filling in a missing piece of trail from, you know, the school to downtown, been about a couple times to me, that that's been a, something that you always wanna consider looking at, but I'll just leave it at that. Those applications are due in a month, we can't start it the week before though, so. Do you want me to put anything on a map, or are you not interested?
There, there is one spot, Jer, that I've talked to the park board about numerous times, and it comes off of our trail, our path on Highway 200 to go straight across to the north towards the tennis courts. And kids bike and walk through there a lot, and there's a walking path, it's been there since I was a kid. And they have to basically hopscotch across the, the animal creek to cross it. And I know that that could be an issue with FEMA, because you're dealing with, I don't know if we got to have some sort of a walking bridge there of some sort, but...
Locks culvert or something, probably.
It, it is, it's too, we wouldn't be able to put a culvert in, I don't think, but, may, maybe, I don't know, but that's, maybe afterwards I could show you where we could drive by and hit straight. Where's the tennis courts?
Right there, go down, right in here, sorry.
Right there, yeah, yeah, so it just comes right, right across here. There's a fence, where this fence is, the fence sign's right there, I believe that's right straight, straight here. But, gonna drive by and take a peek.
I'll take a look at this, that in, in, the cap on the program is only $280,000. So I, I have priced pedestrian bridges before, but it's been a while. I can definitely look at it and tell you what it costs, but I'm guessing, just starting looking at this right now, we're probably not gonna be in line to submit an application in August, but if you guys are gonna hold on it and wanna do it, we can definitely...
And I don't, I don't think everybody's even talked about it or seen it or thought about it. Done hold might be a strong word, but interested, Buster?
Well, you know, I think it'd, I still think it'd be neat if we could connect the bike path up north, come down, is this, is this Seventh over here? The Senex Street, more turn, turn, and then, you know, we should have a sidewalk going out this way. You know, we don't have a sidewalk going past, you know, the dental clinic here. And we could take that all the way out, and if we could put a, if we could put like a ten-foot sidewalk in there, then they could probably bike on it. And I'm not sure about, you know, putting a bike lane in on coming off of the highway, but you know, if we were to do that, we would then have our city encircled with bike path, which I think would be a good deal. You know, I realize that Senex Road is pretty heavily traveled at times, but, you know, maybe the engineer here could, maybe we could look at a semi-alternative to that, but I still think it makes sense to, for us to put a sidewalk out this way, especially if we could get eighty percent with the going on too.
As far as sidewalks concerned too, if a guy wants walking path, it would be really nice, you look at Third Avenue from Main Street all the way up to the hub, if they will sidewalk, that actually ran all the way up that direction, there are a lot of people that walk on the street because there's not a, there's hidden miss blocks with sidewalk, but I mean, that's walked and traveled just as much as worth over here to do the Senex, I would say, you get money to fill in that sidewalk and get people off the street.
Yeah, actually the other day when that garage was being moved on Sunday evening out, out of there, people were walking with a stroller along that, but they had to get out of the street for this garage to head down.
Place for people to push rollers on most of that, from, from Main Street all the way up to the hub.
Well, if you want any maps and cost estimates, if I take grant five hours, you know, draw a map, email back and forth and say, "Is this what you're looking at, is this what you're looking at?", and then give you a cost. I don't know if I would be at your meeting and not give you that, but we, I could call in maybe if that's...
That property just east of St. Matthews there, that, where that railroad ties this high up to, you know, I don't know how you'd put it in sidewalk in there, but that, you'd have to really cut into that, that, that yard.
Or if you went on the other side of the street, or whatever, I mean, it seems like there's...
The west side has more sidewalk than the east side does.
The only one I was brought up, I know, probably years ago, with the west side of, I guess, Main Street, you know, if we were to join that into the sidewalk, we'd know by... Oh, I know, you're certain? Well, I know there's already one, I guess, you know, just...
Up to there?
Just, I guess, like past the old, I guess, like dyke, let's say, you know, there's already one there, but...
Now, there's a lot of, lot of options. There's also a lot of roadblocks, it seems like, it's always something, it's like, it's not simple.
Well, I guess, I'm, I'm not gonna do anything unless they talk me to, and they're doing them on, so. If you think about it, you want me to do something, I'll do it, keep the time as tiny as possible, but I have to have something in front of you to make a decision at the next meeting, if you wanted to go after it or not.
You know, the west side, going by Iver France, and there, Ivers and Reichs, you know, those aren't so bad, but the, the two properties south of Ivers, yeah, that's such a big slope, and, but, that might be the easiest way to get up that road.
You know, another option, like that Casey brought up though, would be running that sidewalk on the north side of Main, you know, across the local properties and connect with the other bike path. You know, I, I think you could probably stay in the ditch, I don't know, couldn't you? You know, and that I did in front of Hagel's house and, which McColl's place there? I mean, because that is a dead, that's a dead spot there too, when you're walking. You gotta, you gotta jog out on that, oh, either that or you gotta go to the arm. Yeah, so. And that would, I mean, if we had to choose, that might be a better option than trying to run a sidewalk on this way past, by here, but I think that would be nice too. Or maybe we'll go all. If you guys trust me, I'll just...
It's eighty twenty, not eighty, or ninety-eight, tip two.
Wait, I know, I know. And honestly, I don't even, like on this last one, the DOT selected who they hired as engineers, so I don't even know if I would have anything to gain by doing this, so it's not like I'm trying to develop some project here. If you wanna apply for it, we'll help you, if you don't, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. But if you want us to bring a few options and some costs, you guys can look through at a will.
Is there one more thing, Buster?
Well, the other thing that I was just going to add, is I know there's going to be other communities that are looking at the same kind of thing, you know, so, because there's a, you know, there's a reasonable amount of money that's coming through. You know, it's not that it's all coming in one year, you know, I think it's coming in increments of over five years. You know, so, but, I mean, Congress would've never put out the notice. You know, if you're interested in, you know, getting on the docket, get your, you know, get an application in. You know, so. Well, if the conduit is for the work, basically.
DOT does this one every year, same as the Indy Street.
Indy Street, we can, we do work in the highway directly, this transportation alternatives program, we can do others.
Well, I recommend that you guys, everybody go look at those couple areas on Main Street and go on, heading north up to the hub and out here towards Senex, and if you have any huge, any concerns at all, I think we should get that to Monty by, you know, let's say like Wednesday of this week or the next couple days, you know, and talk to each other, not, not more than two of us at a time, but, you know, it's, part of me says going out to, on Main Street, heading out west to the grocery store, we have a, we have a, that was one of the reasons why we did the street through the, the dyke there, past that one. You know, we have access, you know, people can get, you know, down that way, walking, riding bike, whatever, but... I don't know, it's, we don't have endless amounts of money either, I know it's eighty twenty, sounds good too, but it's still, you know, twenty percent of $200,000, still a chunk of money. Right now, nothing, but we'll, we won't ask you a week out.
If we get an email and told to tell us to do something, we'll do it.
Okay, all right, thank you, anything else?
Uh, no, we've got about fifteen minutes.
Okay, sounds good, thanks guys. All right, moving on, we have two raffles, we have Iron Iron Motorcycle Fundraiser, and we have the Dollars to Scholars application. We can take those separately if you want, or together? If anybody has any questions, I'd like to...
Like to approve both together, please?
We have a motion by Hack. Second by Weeder, discussion. Go call, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, they both are approved. Okay, six C. John and Cheryl, I have renewed their lease for the garden plot they have. Anything special, Monty, we need to...
No, basically just updated the dates on this lease agreement. As you can see, it's kinda back in the serious south of the tracks behind their place they have. Kept it rather clean and tidy all these years, so. I didn't change the terms in the lease either.
How do they access across the track?
Or they're moving stuff and going on.
But, that's it. Okay, who has the, the concerns, taking motion?
I'm making motion up first, then?
Motion by Weeder. Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. All right, seven A. The top ordinance.
Since the first reading, we did make a couple of updates. As far as the limitation, we did put a, an exception in there, if you are housing animals, rescue animals, or foster animals, that you can get a permit to do more than the limit of three, four cats or dogs, and that, there again, that permit would be valid for one year, basically one calendar year, and then you'd have to renew it if you were gonna keep doing that. The other thing we did include was, in the penalty phase, some alternative sentencing options for the municipal judge. This gives a little more latitude for things like mark collars, those types of alternatives. Otherwise, everything remains unchanged from what was approved at the first reading a month ago, June sixth.
Got any concerns that you see that we need, okay?
Not really, no, this is, we have a very bearable ordinance, and I don't mind that at all. I like to see discretion with the judges and sound the same.
Okay.
So.
I know we bumped the penalties, we made things a bit more stringent, but still left it pretty open for, like you said, the judge to make some discretion. So then this would be the second reading, Monty, will you approve this?
If you wanna approve it, or if you wanna see if there's any other comments that come in. We did publish it to our website and everything last week, when we made the final updates, like midweek last week, so I haven't had any comments in my offices yet.
Okay. You wanna approve it, second reading, or do you want to wait?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Motion by Hack.
I'll second that.
Second by Pillar, discussion. So then the only kind of, I guess, changes? This stuff in the red?
Yes, yes.
Another discussion. Go call.
Hack, aye, Pillar, aye, Stern, aye, Weeder, aye, Omenour.
Aye, motion carried.
It'll be effective upon publication as soon as I can get it published.
Thank you. All right, eight A. Novax are requesting to put a shed on their property.
Yeah, they're looking at one of the Northland sheds, ten by twenty. They're thinking they can get it in there, but they thought they would put in the one or two-foot variance, it's gonna go right on the north side of the garage there. They thought they'd put in the one or two-foot variance just in case, they don't wanna get it too close to the house, so that... And in that zoning district, it's supposed to be a ten-foot side turn, so they're looking at eight or nine feet from the property line, and the undeveloped property to the north.
Everybody know where this property's at? Okay, know where it's at? Motion to the board.
Is there any issues with the landowner to the north of them at all, Monty? Did Novax make any...
Not that I know of, no. Is there a utility he's met there?
There is seven and a half feet on each side of the line, so they'd actually be building over the top of the utility?
They'd stay up in that.
They'd stay up there.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Motion by Weeder. Second, second by Stern, discussion. Go call.
Weeder, aye, Stern, aye, Hack, aye, Pillar, aye, Omenour.
Aye, motion carried. All right, moving on. So we have an application for a transient merchant license for Renee...
Przynski.
And this individual is just taking the place of or doing basically the same thing that the young man that we approved last year?
Yes.
It's the same company. The other young gentleman moved on and this one's taken over. Make motion to approve.
Motion by Pillar. Second by Stern, discussion.
Are, are you accepting other requests that are tied to this?
I was gonna say, are you? I was gonna say, are you with regard to the fees that they requested waived? We generally charge twenty-five dollars per day.
While they're, while they're walking around?
Yes. He, he's, when he, when, if it's approved, he'll give me his schedule and then we'll have him pay the fees upfront.
What did we do with them last?
He paid the fees.
Paid the fees?
Yeah. I'll, I'll amend my motion to say approval, but implement the fees as we have been asked.
Okay.
Second there. Okay, we have a motion by Pillar, second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Weager.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye.
Now on, on the amended motion?
What's that?
Now on the amended motion?
My bad. Okay, now we need a, a vote for an und amended motion.
The mo, the motion as it is now is to approve without waiving any fees.
Okay, right, so we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Weager.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion carried. Thanks for keeping me straight, Monty.
So should we technically go ahead and demolish first of all?
No.
Probably.
No. Stop it, man.
You wanna be straight?
I don't know. Eleven A.
Eight.
Yeah, I don't see now.
What's that?
Eight C on the new one.
That's right, yeah, eight C, yeah. So condemnation and demolition on, pretend, Monty, you want to break the speed?
Well, as you, as President Overnour said, the garage has been removed. Slatton Excavating did give us an estimate, this would include removing the garage pad and likely the driveway that was in there as well. He's thinking he'll do some damage to the driveway with this track hole. Uh, I guess it's up to you if you want to accept this, obviously these costs will be invoiced to the property owner and if they're not paid, they will be assessed as a special assessment. It is quite a bit higher because of the concrete removal and the fact that our crew is busy so they're gonna have to use their own trucks, where the last time we did have trucks and staff available to haul stuff out for them, so. I did try to contact Goldberg and move the garage, but I had no luck getting hold of him to, to let him know that he's probably looking at a pretty hefty bill to get this removed.
So, we, we did a condemnation of the home?
Yes.
So I guess I'm, I'm not seeing the logic behind pulling out that slab of the garage? That would be up to the landowners, they, I mean, it's still the landowner's property, correct?
Yeah, I was thinking, I would be...
Yeah. I, I'd be willing to make a motion to move forward excluding the demolition of the garage slab. Don't be careful on the dirty one.
I don't, I don't think, if, if the landowner ultimately wanted to do that, I would encourage them to approach the landowner if they wanted to go forward with that, but I'm not gonna force that down the line, okay?
I know when Tim Schwartz took down a house for Christie and I one time, he did, right, give you the driveway path they were on, so. He had a pretty good sized machine on there.
That brings it back closer in line with what the original estimate would have been?
Yeah.
Isn't it, we have, we have filter for them, Dave?
Yeah.
Alright, so we have a motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Weager, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Weager.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you. Okay, reports, water sewer.
Okay, we have completed the review of candidates for the replacement of our water position. And I am bringing to the table tonight a number of recommendations. First is, I make a recommendation to the board to make the full-time job offering to Jared Donohue. And I would like to start him at nineteen dollars an hour in this full-time position. So that would be my first motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Pillar. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. Wanna roll call Monty on that?
Yeah, from...
Roll call, yes.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Weager.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye.
Second point of discussion, we have a two-person team that takes care of our water needs within the city. And we, we have assigned basically an individual to be the lead for that. We have Mike Lemire, who is, was our second water person and now is our experienced water person in there. And I would like to propose that we go ahead and we bump his current pay at twenty-two eighty-four an hour up to twenty-three fifty an hour and recognize him as the, the lead wastewater, home wastewater manager.
Okay. Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Weager, discussion.
Does he have, how many courses does he have? Is he wrapped up or is he...
He has enough, he has no certifications yet, he had to wait two years before he can do a custom.
Okay. So we'll continue down that path and that'll be part of the understanding and discussions.
Okay. Roll call. Do you have another question? I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, I guess, you know, so now then on the street department, is there gonna be a couple of job openings or...
Well, there is going to be a full-time position opening that Jared will be vacating. And in discussions with Monty, we're going to go ahead and post that right away.
And that'll be a three-day during the winter and a five-day job in the summer.
Yep.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second word discussion, roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Weager.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Carry. Anything else, Dan?
Well, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Streets Cemetery.
I have nothing at this time other than I'm assuming Monty will post that effectively?
Yeah, we'll get that published and, and posted to the website, yeah.
I didn't talk to Dave, the individual that, that bailed. I requested Dave this morning that we have him get the bails off very late. He said he was gonna talk to him today, so.
I think you got him on Sunday.
Okay. In the ones in the ditches, a lot of them.
I didn't look at the other ones, he said he got rid of the rules.
Anything else, Dan?
No.
We have parts for that boulder deck, that January boulder deck?
Yeah, I used it all the way today.
You did? Great. Uh, finance, bus and library. Oh, they, you know. Mr. Weager.
Uh, so nothing for the police or fire. Did talk to Mike, there's a dead tree right over by the park over here. I would like him to remove that before the chop pest happens. Big dead one right there.
It's unfortunate, at the beginning of summer, it had all its leaves on it.
Yeah.
And now it's half.
He said he's been babying it for a couple of years and he said it's probably time it would go. If that chop pest is gonna be as big as it is, you know, it'd be nice to get rid of it before.
Is it, is it diseased or just old?
Yeah, it was diseased. According to him, it had that Dutch elm disease.
And we were warned about that tree two years ago and it, I thought it was gonna survive another summer, but the last three weeks, half of it, leaves are gone, half of it, right, yeah. Not too bad, 'cause that's probably the most mature tree in that, over there, one of them, with shade.
So he's gonna look at, try to get that gone before the chop pest happens next month.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, thank you. HCD Buster.
Okay, just call me the light guy. So, I'm just bringing this to your attention again, we need a light up on eleven next to Otter Creek Loop. And I've had the neighbors asking, when are, when are we gonna, when are we gonna get a light up there Buster?
With the temples.
And I'm wondering, Jared, because I had inquired about getting a light one time out at Rough Rider, I mean, through Rough Rider out of the golfers, and they asked, oh, well, would, do you think you could get by with the solar? I don't know that, but, you know, we can't wait for the, the road to get fixed. I mean, we've been, there's, some of us have been up there longer than others and it's dark. And, you know, that intersection that we're on, you know, I, I'm not sure, you know, how you determine where you place those puppies, but I did talk to Rough Rider about it as well. And of course, they, they said they'd help set the pole, but that's about all they can do, but, and I know the big issue is a lot of times pulling wire, but if, if we could put something solar up there, maybe as a temporary fix until the road gets all situated, 'cause I know we had a few meetings a while ago that you talked about, you know, getting lights in once, all the way around the loop eventually, but that's gonna be a big project and that's, that's gonna be a ways down the road. So, anyway, food for thought, uh...
Jared, Jared, do you guys, I don't determine where those lights get set, or the poles get set, or is that all Rough Rider?
We do a lot of subdivisions and, yes, on our plans, we show that streetlights are in it. A lot of it depends on the type of light you pick out. You pick, like, the, the big Cobra head style ones, you can get by a plus. And if we wanna do an ornate decorative one, then we have to do more of them. But, I mean, a good estimate would be like three lights per block would be a, you know, normal street, I guess. But, we don't wanna do anything until we dig up that, we're talking Expedition States area, right? We're gonna need streetlights up there and, um, we're replacing the sewers, water mains, we don't want any below ground condu. I like the idea of the temporary, um, solar one, it's a good idea, just to get you through for a while.
Are you thinking the pole be set though on the west side of the street going up?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I mean, that's where the first intersection is and, you know, that's an open lot over there.
Yeah, on the west side.
You could probably even push it back a little ways where, I, I don't know, you know, Jared could come up and look at it, I'm not sure.
So I think it'd be out of the way.
Yeah.
You know, when they did the work, it'd be...
So, in, some, in cities are different, if your local utility wants to put them in and own them, you guys just pay a fee to maintain them, that's fine too, that I would get them all, but...
Every community's different.
Is that how you guys, is that how it's operating right now?
Not anymore.
Not anymore?
Oh, yeah.
So you're gonna wanna, yeah, okay, good.
So, but at least I would say, you know, you could take a look at it and see what's...
We're probably gonna need about ten or twelve throughout that whole...
Well, and, and you know, I think temporarily, because when you go to the next neighbors, there is a light there.
Up by Todd Parkers?
Yes. It's offset a little bit to the south, but it's lit. I mean, I walk that every morning, most mornings, and I can see where I'm going.
Yeah.
Better than I can when I turn the loop to, to come out of my driveway, you know? Um, so, but, whatever, you know, and, I mean, it doesn't sound like that they're gonna get after that road for a while yet anyway, you know? And I'll be high press that leave that it even gets done before the snow flies.
Right.
Possibly, so. Anyway, uh, the next item that I just wanna share with you is, is, gave me a little update on the Partners in Planning Grant that we, uh, submitted and, uh, we're moving along with that. We did end up, uh, um, surveying a hundred and twenty high school kids before school got open. And those results came back pretty good, I guess, I haven't seen them per se. Uh, but we're in the process of, of, uh, there are two surveys now that are put together that we'll be getting out, one is for the general patrons and one will be for the business communities. And so, we're just in the process of figuring out how we wanna get that information out to our patrons. Uh, we looked today, Monty and I were looking, he was helping me a little bit, and we have about seventeen hundred five eight, five four five addresses in our area. And so, our plan, uh, I think the plan is to try to get a survey to everybody. I realize that some of those are gonna be doubled up because, you know, some people probably have a couple buildings or whatever. But, just to see in terms of where we're at, and from what I was looking at, you know, you can do the online things through the post office and it's really pretty reasonable and we figured it would probably run about thirteen cents a postcard to get those out, but, of course, part of the plan is to get them on postcards, put a, a cue code on it and so then people could go to town on it. We did a, uh, I did a dummy thing of both of them, just to see how, how it would go. I went through the first one in about ten minutes and the second one, which I was guessing about fifteen, and maybe it's probably fifteen, twenty. So hopefully, we'll end up getting, you know, some reasonable responses. We haven't gotten live with those yet, but we will, once we're live, we'll get them, uh, out socially as well on social media platforms and whatever, so.
Well, it's just hard to find a perfect avenue to reach as many as possible and I think that's probably the best way, best we can use.
And it's, you know, in terms of, of, uh, what we're hoping to accomplish, it's really pretty feasible. I mean, in terms of cost-wise, I mean, if we can get seventeen hundred postcards off for three hundred dollars or thereabouts, it'll be more than that. I'm guessing five because of the privacy of printing charges, but still, that's pretty reasonable. So, questions? Alright, I'll go down.
Thanks Buster. Alright, moving on to eleven, Transit Late Maintenance Plan Update. That's like serious.
They brought this up a couple of meetings ago and then the state had some further updates. They have completed all their updates, as I indicated in my notes. Basically, we'll just be following for preventative maintenance, we'll just be following manufacturers' recommendations for intervals, for oil changes, rotations, those types of things. And that, and then we do have our, do have our checklist at the back for daily inspections and if there's an issue, how we handle those, so. I guess basically, you just need your approvals so we can adopt this and get it to the state as part of our program. And then who, who develops that, does Peggy reach out to, to the manufacturers and get all this?
It's all in the user manual, though.
Okay.
Take a break from them.
Okay.
Okay, need a motion, please? Move to approve the maintenance, motion by Stern. Second by Pillar, discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Weager.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye, motion carried, thank you.
Jared. Do you have that, I've got, you've just triggered my memory on something.
Yeah, you bet.
We've already, listen. I don't know how many people have asked, but I was part of that this last week, traveling from Gulf Field home. Um, do we know when we've recharged, when was the last time we recharged ACs on those units? Because, uh, the one that I rode on, who we took, needs it bad. And I, I have heard that the, the one that the Legion uses also needs it too.
Peggy was checking on all of them today.
Okay, okay. I mean, I realize coming back up, it's someone's beaten from the west, but that last trip, and we turned and hit shade, it was like, holy moly. So, and that was, that Thursday was a hot day.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Monty.
You bet.
Alright, twelve A, uh, Monty, preliminary budget.
Yeah, basically, I put a bunch of numbers together, I went with the three percent, which is what we were told. Insurance wouldn't be more than three percent, no, I, that doesn't include the debt on vision, I'm still waiting for a response from them. But they were thinking it should be right around there, if any. Again, these are very preliminary numbers, just thought if you guys wanna take a look at them, I wasn't... at them. I wasn't sure as far as wages, as they indicated on there. With nine point one percent inflation, where I got lost to go, I didn't do anything more than two and a half percent for any of the calculations, so. Again, if you guys just want to take a look at it, we'll probably do a special meeting if you want to go through it line by line, or however you want to do it. We do have to have it approved into the county by August tenth, and as every other year, we can always go down on our budget, but we can't increase our levy based on our preliminary. So I guess this is just some very preliminary numbers.
I personally, when we meet and discuss.
Do you want to try and schedule something though for next week, or? Or something, I mean, if we're doing a special meeting, you could even approve it the first week of August after the regular meeting. It's up to you.
I know, I'm out of town for work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, next week.
I'm trying to get through shit.
Is that the first week of August, I'm pretty sure, buddy. Let's try to hit down a couple of dates and get back to Monty tomorrow if we can, a couple of dates, okay, for the first week of August?
Can we, can we piggyback on, we have our meeting on Monday, the first of August? Yeah? You just have to get a notice that you're on a special meeting.
Yeah.
Before?
I don't know.
That would be.
Working people would have to.
That would probably be best for me, you know, that, that day.
First of August after the regular? Do it after. That way I can let Dan, Aaron, know as well.
Okay, yeah. Bring your luggage box.
Maybe some heater.
Maybe, yeah. Okay. Twelve B. We'll need to start the contract. So Monty and I talked a little bit about this, and so has Pat, about possibly contracting for our building inspector stuff, so you guys have seen the notes here that Monty sent out. I think it's probably a better direction to go.
Who does Bueller use?
Your state engineering?
Same thing that we're looking at.
I mean, I got nothing against Bueller, but I mean, I, I think there's some things that could be addressed more thorough than others. Personally, I, that's just my opinion.
I guess the only thing I see is, I mean, on the cost of this, they're going to be, I guess, like passed on.
Correct.
They're charging, charging them, I guess, charging, I guess, at ninety-eight dollars an hour, and then they got a drive from next Bueller and back, you know, so then, let's say that if your garden shed, like a large one, you know, is that going to have to happen? I guess like three or four then, three or four, I guess, inspections, or I mean, I guess I'm just wondering, is that going to cost a person? Well, I suppose if there's concrete and electrical and plumbing, or I suppose it's going to take more than one.
Yeah, basically, it would be the same as any other one. It would take four inspections, basically.
And that's, and that's something that we want to let the owners, you know, whoever's getting the permit to know that, okay, you're.
We would just have to adjust our fees.
Right, exactly.
Permit fees would just have to be adjusted.
Yeah, and if all passed on, we're not going to incur any of those. So, yeah. I mean, I just don't want, or I think the fees are high, you know? Even if there's a way to, I mean, like lower goes down, yeah.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Well, like I said in the notes, I don't know that there's been a lot of issues with his construction inspections. I mean, he's pretty thorough on them. Granted, the report isn't real thorough on them, but, you know, pretty thorough on them. If we just wanted to start with the condemnation stuff and leave him on the, the construction for now and. I know that's, that's the only thing I've had direct contact with as of late, and I feel like maybe that was lacking just a little bit. You know, whenever the question was asked if there was any internal access, to me, if you're going to condemn a home, you can't just do it on a few mixing shingles and some crappy paint job on it and stuff like that, you know, I, although the one on fourth had, you know, saw the foundation on it, so. But I, I would be looking for a little bit more thorough job. If we're going to be signing off on tearing people's homes down and stuff, I want to make sure that we're getting our best advice on that. I'd, I'd be comfortable splitting it out and just maybe pursuing an outside entity to look at condemnation, condemnation.
Okay, and maybe he doesn't want to split it up, and if he doesn't want to, then let us look at maybe doing everything through one firm, but visit with him and see if that's maybe one of the best. So I guess on that note that they, I guess, I guess, does the property owner have to, I guess, have to, I guess, let them inside, you know, to inspect the place?
I'm uncertain, but I would suspect yes. It would. I mean, it's all about health, safety, typically those, the public interest can outweigh the private interest in those. Yeah.
I know, but Keith Johnson was with Custer Health. It seemed like there was more communication between Custer Health and the, and the condemnation of when he dealt with those things at one point, so.
Yeah, they were looking at it from specifically the health aspect.
Right, yeah. Not a structural. Right, so that, I think that was the, I think that was the conduit for, and I don't know if we talked to Custer Health anymore about that stuff. Probably should.
We do either. I don't know if we've had condemnation based on health issues other than those trailer homes up north there, but I am concerned about the structural part because I feel like, you know, that there's some questionable reports based on observations without any empirical knowledge or testing or facts on the structures themselves.
Yeah. No, we, we have a property that we've sent the condemnation letter to, and then the person started putting new windows in it after we sent them the letter. How do we continue?
They did present a plan as requested by us.
Okay.
Till morning, and we did review it, so. I don't have the report, haven't had his review yet.
Been nice to have that. And things like that, I think, just more of a professional report and, and expedited, just get it done, so. Okay?
I will visit with you.
Okay. We don't need to take any action right now, do we? Okay. All right, thirteen, public comments, everybody. All right, thank you. Brooke Mills. Anything Monty can do?
We don't have it, then, a couple hundred thousand approved.
Motion approved.
Motion by Hack. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Hack?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Weider?
Aye.
Omenauer?
Aye.
Carry. Brooke. Beatty Jersey, thank you. See you tomorrow.